Oh geez, I lost it. Are you guys ready?
Yep.
All right.
Horn ready.
All right, everybody, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular city council meeting of March 27th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Morris. Larson.
Here.
Smith. Perkins.
Here.
McAdams. Verbic.
Here.
Faver.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Bye-bye.
All right, we have a quorum. McAdams, Smith, and Morris all let me know ahead of time that they would not be able to make it tonight. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Could I have Mr. Hyvee lead us in the pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. Yes?
I'd like to make a slight change. If we could move Agenda Item K8 to the beginning of the K's before K1.
Awesome. So I have a motion to move Agenda Item K8 to the beginning of the resolutions. Can I have a second?
Second.
So moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Man, that happened fast. The agenda has been approved. All right, moving on to Presentations. I do have a proclamation I'd like to read. So this is about Vietnam Veterans Day, March 29th, whereas in 1982, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial was dedicated in Washington, DC to commemorate those members of the US Armed Forces who died or were declared missing in action in Vietnam. And whereas members of the US Armed Forces who served bravely and faithfully for the US during the Vietnam War era were caught upon their return home in the crossfire of a public debate about the involvement of the US-Vietnam War. And whereas March 29th, 2023, is the 50th anniversary of the day that combat and combat support units withdrew completely from South Vietnam. And whereas veterans of the Vietnam War era faithfully served and contributed to the military, and in the 50 years since, have faithfully served and contributed to their community since returning home. And whereas Vietnam War veterans have worked for the last 50 years to promote awareness of the importance of communities empowering veterans and the necessity of helping veterans readjust to civilian life after military service. And whereas Vietnam War veterans have worked to assist veterans returning from other conflicts, including wars in Afghanistan and Iraq, and to support the reintegration of younger veterans into civilian life. And whereas the establishment of a day to welcome home Vietnam-era veterans is an appropriate way to honor those members of the US Armed Forces who served during the Vietnam War era. And whereas Vietnam Veterans Day commemorates the hardships suffered and sacrifices made by the 9 million Americans during the Vietnam War, including their families who supported them before and after the war. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, along with the DeKalb City Council, honor this 50th anniversary of Vietnam Veterans Day and recognize the veterans for their service and sacrifice during their conflict. Yeah, let's give a round of applause. If you all don't mind, I'd love to have you come up here. And Scott, if you can get a shot of all of us, that'd be fantastic. Council, if you wouldn't mind coming down and being part of the picture, that'd be phenomenal. Scott, what do you think? Where's the best thing?
I gotta do an ankle thing. I think we gotta sort of see how we're doing.
All right. So let's, might need to swish in a little bit, or? Yeah. Okay. Come on up, swish in. Sorry. Let me actually open one of the proclamations. It's pretty important. All right. There we go here. I'll take three, and then three, two, one. Very good. Got some more here? Thanks again, gentlemen. So, here. So, Michael will correct me if I don't have everyone, but tonight, just so everyone knows, we have the DeKalb and Metz. Representative, representative. Sorry, this was hard to, this was, this was actually a little hard to do, so. You guys, you bet, you bet. We have the DeKalb American Legion. Who wants to receive that? Thanks again.
Thank you.
And DeKalb and Metz Veteran Organization. Do we have the, oh, we printed them both out. Yes, okay. Thanks. Appreciate it. All right, I let some of you know, our meetings are incredibly riveting, but absolutely all of you, go home to your families, enjoy this night. No reason in the world to stay for this meeting at all. We take zero offense by having you do that, so I'd actually take offense if you stayed because you felt obligated. So please, go enjoy your evening. So moving on to public participation, I have Mark Charvat. And as a reminder, there's three minutes, sir.
At the last council meeting during council reports, the mayor reported on an initiative to lower the tax rate among all taxing districts within our county. He reported that the city had a meeting with other leaders of government taxing districts in attempt to try to lower the tax rate across the board. It's a shame that neither the press nor the public was invited to this private meeting, which should have been published and promoted in advance so citizens, the press, and the community could listen to the details discussed. I would have been very interested in that discussion. After all, the meeting was attended by leaders of many local units of government. Public has a great interest in this. I didn't see it published on the city website, no notification whatsoever. It's problematic and it shows a true lack of transparency on the part of the mayor and government leaders in attendance. Now, while the mission of this initiative is commendable, once again, it appears the mayor and this council are somewhat missing the point. We are constantly hearing the phrase, "Lower the tax rate." Your constituents don't look at the rate they are getting, they are paying. They look at the dollars paid when their tax bill arrives, and it's gonna arrive next month. This applies to the overburden homeowners residing in the county, especially in our city, along with businesses and others who own property within the city. What does, what good does a lower tax rate do when the EAV goes up more than the rate goes down? There's a certain percentage here, so teeter-totter effect. You have to have both go down to lower what people are going to pay. It's a constant spread of misinformation by this mayor and some members of this council. Now, in December, this council approved the property tax levy, and the narrative of lowering tax rates was spread to the media, and the narrative was spoken by many members of this council. This council approved both the city tax levy and the library tax levy. When you combine the two, and I warn all the taxpayers, when your bills come next month, you add up those two amounts, you're gonna see a higher tax dollar when you combine the library with the city. So people are paying more money. Yes, I want the rate to be lowered, but you have to lower the tax burden to go along with it. People look at dollars paid. These are citizens that are paying actual dollars. And I encourage the mayor, if you do have another meeting like this again, let the public know so we can all be in attendance and see what work is, I hope you're successful in lowering the dollars that are paid. The tax rate alone is not gonna do it. Thank you.
All right, Derek Van Buren. And again, as a reminder, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Hello, I'm a big supporter of public transit. However, it must be economically feasible. The public must be provided with accurate information to evaluate the effectiveness of the public transit system and new projects. I support reducing our carbon footprint and those costs and savings can be incorporated into the economically feasible model for public transit. I don't support wasting $100,000 in a study where we know the major issues and obtain the necessary information in a working group. I support the city to recreate the Metro Exploratory Committee made up of the mayor's city managers of DeKalb, Sycamore, Cortland, and the County Board, Unipacific and Metro. The city council approved $100,000 on a public transit study. The study will primarily focus on extending the passenger rail service from Elburn to DeKalb, as usual, important details were withheld from the public. In the meeting minutes of the Metro Rail Exploratory Committee did at December 2015, the following points were raised. Unipacific Railroad stated that this line is very important. Unipacific believes that the line will see an 80% increase in rail traffic by 2030. This line is their franchise line that runs transcontinental traffic to the West Coast. Metro said that there are only two lines in the nation that runs 50-plus trains a day, and this line is one of them. Total investment would equal between $400,000 to $500,000 million. Metro said a discussion with RT would be needed to be done. Bill Nicholas said on January 9, 2023, at the council meeting, that the total investment to build a extension line would be $80,000 to $100,000 million. I don't know how the cost could decrease from $400,000 to $500,000 million in eight years. The Daily Chronicle published an article on March 2nd, 2017, issued. Key points from the article include taxes would go up, the RT tax is 1.25% in Cook County and 0.75% in other counties. And another article dated December 8, just a month before, the RT 85-year strategic plan calls for considering 11 tax and fee hikes because of large budget deficits, a projected deficit of $730,000 million in 2026. We should concentrate on increase in bus service to match anticipated demand. We should use effective and accurate measurement indicators to drive future decisions. We should use $100,000 for some high-value needs that can use the monies in the transportation fund. And for your information, Scott McAnon remarked to me on the radar that he did not know what a working group was. So, thank you.
All right, next I have Nate Kloster. And Nate, if you're gonna speak on your agenda item, do you wanna wait till we're gonna do that next, or?
I can.
Yeah, cuz then...
That's what I plan to talk about.
Is that more appropriate, you think? City manager, I'm looking, you've got more experience. Okay. Yeah, just hang on one sec, Nate, and I'll call you up, okay? You bet. And literally, it's gonna be quick here. All right, moving on to appointments, Agenda Item F, we have none. Then Agenda Item G, Approval of the Minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of March 13th, 2023?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faver. Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Now Agenda Item H, Consent Agenda. I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is, number one, accounts payable and payroll through March 13th, 2023, in the amount of $2,420,643.63. Two, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, February 2023. Three, Resolution 2023-031, authorizing the approval of certain executive session minutes and the destruction of certain verbatim recordings. And number four, Resolution 2023-032, authorizing a workman's compensation lump sum petition in order in the amount of $22,054.76 for at least two sick. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure, moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item I, Public Hearings, we have none. Then Agenda Item J, Considerations, we have none. And then Agenda Item, the new K1, which is Resolution 2023-040, authorizing sub-recipient agreements with Children's Learning Center, Elder Care Services, Hope Haven, and Safe Passage in the total amount of $60,000 for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, year 2023, public services funding from April 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2024. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. At this point, I would take public comment, if you wanna come on up.
Well, good evening. My name is Nate Kloster. I'm the CEO of Voluntary Action Center. As you well know, we are a nonprofit organization that has been providing transportation and nutrition services for DeKalb County for over 40 years. It was a sad day for us when we lost the urban transportation program for DeKalb, Sycamore, and Cortland, but we have made significant strides in building efficiency in our program and look forward to the day that we could once again bid on the urban para-transit service. However, that is not my primary reason for talking to you this evening. VAC approaches the city for funding for two nutrition programs, one through human services funding that helps fund operating expenses for our hot meals, the Meals on Wheels program. The other request is the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and VAC uses these funds to provide cold-sack meals for individuals that live in low-income housing. This would include Taylor Street Plaza, University Village, Gideon Court, to name a few. The CDBG funds also provide frozen and shelf-stable meals during the winter months, and the event VAC has to close due to weather issues. It came to our attention last week, the city council agenda includes a proposal to eliminate the CDBG support for Voluntary Action Center. The memo to Mr. Nicholas dated March 22 from Jennifer Yocum as supporting documentation to this resolution, under Paragraph 2 entitled Background, indicates a previous sub-recipient also submitted an application for the same services through the human services grant, and the two grant requests were combined and exceeded the overall cost for the program budget. Thus, our request was eliminated. Combining the two programs was an error. Meals on Wheels is our hot meals program, and the CDBG application is for the cold-sack program. These are separate programs and should not have been combined when considering this grant. These community development funds are also used as matching funds and enable us to garner 35% additional funds from the Department of Aging, which further supports the program. So the loss translates into additional loss through this program. It comes at a time during inflationary pressures where we have experienced a 30% increase in food costs and a 5% increase in labor costs. Without the commitment of funding through CDBG, VAC will no longer have the resources to continue the cold-sack meal program effective April 1st, which is the start of the CDBG grant period. This is very short notice to communicate to individuals that the city decided to eliminate this program. These individuals have very limited resources on top of SNAP benefits being reduced. I certainly appreciate other agencies that receive funding from CDBG. We are all in this together, trying to meet the various needs of the population. CDBG has supported VAC for more than 20 years. We've not changed, and to my knowledge, the program did not change for 2023. At this point, we can only ask the city council to vote to exercise Option 2 and authorize the mayor to adjust funding amounts. We appear to have been eliminated when the two programs were combined in error. If the council agrees to Option 2, we'll continue providing the cold-sack meals until we hear of the final funding amounts.
Thanks, Nate.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'll call you back up if we need to. City manager.
Thank you. So just a little bit of background about this particular program, some of it was referred to earlier. So the city has two programs that it manages. One is the Human Services Budget, which comes out of our General Operating Fund, and that was about $200,000 this year. VAC did qualify for, and the council approved a grant of $20,000 for their hot meal program, the Meals on Wheels. And separately, under HUD guidelines now, there is the Community Development Block Grant Program, which falls within, and you've been through, most of you have been through this a number of times, there's a five-year plan, then there's an annual plan. And in January, the annual plan was approved by the council to proceed with something that we've been doing in recent years, which is to dedicate a portion of that annual allocation, which at the time, we didn't know in January, but it's about $400,000. We have a limit, we can only devote 15% of that total on an annual basis for what's called public services, and this is for agencies that directly provide services to local residents. The city being, you know, one arm's length removed from that as a funding agency, basically. So there's, it's a competitive process with only $60,000 this year, it's been going down in recent years. It was up a little bit during COVID, it's down now, and it was down last year. So we, it's very competitive. And one thing we expect is that agencies that are applying, give us an idea of what the focus is and why that's a special focus and why it should deserve or gain your attention for some funding. So, and rather than have just one person make that decision, we have an internal staff group, which changes on an annual basis, people who are just looking objectively at what the facts are. That, that group was engaged, they came up with recommendations for five out of the six, or excuse me, four out of the five, and as the gentleman said, Voluntary Action Center did not receive a recommendation. So, tough choices. Tough choices for you, too. You have to make the ultimate decision. But if there is to be a change, then we have to look at the other proposed grants and see who gets less or who doesn't get something. And we could open that all up to you, that's your prerogative. But I think the system is fair, I think it was followed fairly. Everybody had the same chance to make the strongest case. Every one of these agencies has received support from us before, it was just a tough decision. We stand by this recommendation. Also, there's something I should mention. All agencies that have been applying in recent years have been recipients, many of them, I should say, have been recipients in recent years. So they're also aware, it's very important to have timely reports to show to you and to us, obviously, and more important, to HUD, that the money's being spent wisely and very meticulously for the purposes identified. Not every agency does that.
And just, I was gonna interrupt you, but you were, you were giving us a lot of information. Just so I'm clear, the amount that we can carve out of that from a HUD perspective went from 80 to 60.
Yeah.
So no matter what, we're in a...
Well, 80, what you're looking at in the chart here is $80,000 worth of application. 60, last year, I can't remember off the top of my head, was it, whatever it was, 15% of, say, $415,000 rather than $400,000.
Counsel. Alderwoman Larson.
I'm just wondering if there's any information, as I could understand if you have 20,000 less, that you're gonna have to divide it differently. But why several got exactly what they requested, others got a slight, and VAC got nothing? What was the decision process, why, you know, it doesn't seem like...
Yeah, so I wasn't in the room, and I trust the people that were doing it, and I particularly trust our community services coordinator. And this was, this was a process that, first of all, the application process went over a period of weeks. People could have asked questions if they were concerned that maybe it wouldn't be approved, or application might not have been received correctly. There's communication between us and these agencies all the time. So I just think that any one of these agencies could have asked for a lot more. So it isn't that, this is all they needed to do, these, if you look at the particular programs, certainly the CLC spends more than $15,000 a year on low-income families for transportation of children between their homes and schools, and we could go down the list. So they thought that, I don't have a list here of all the things that they have asked for in prior years, but again, I'm satisfied that this was a fair process, it was an open process, it was a thorough process. And we're, we would be very happy and welcome a more pointed and focused application from VAC next year.
Counsel. Yes, Alderman Perkins.
So was there, was there any dialogue at all with them on the thought that they were gonna be eliminated from funding?
Well, we couldn't have had that dialogue before...
I understand the reduction. But when there's history, and there's something, when they request something and get something, and then request something and get nothing, and then potentially programs are eliminated, it was, what was, I'm curious on the dialogue between VAC and the committee?
Again, I wasn't in the room or on the phone, and Jennifer Yocum is welcome to come up and address you. I can tell you that, that the 20,000 that was voted and approved by you earlier this year for VAC was a substantial contribution in terms of all the other agency support that we did.
When I received the call from VAC on Thursday afternoon, once the agenda for this meeting was posted, I got in touch with the grant committee. They had, Leah had asked me from VAC to reconsider the final outcome, and explained to me how VAC uses the money, and quite honestly, with my history with the Housing Authority, I know how that food's used and I know who it's serving. After 15 years with the Housing Authority, they were like family to me. So I fully understood, and I understood the magnitude of the decision from the grant committee. When we met in early December, the grant committee ranked each of the applications for human services and for CDBG. Regretfully for CDBG, VAC came in fifth place for their application, and I believe 17th for the 2019 applications for human services. And based upon the submitted application, it wasn't clearly defined that they were two separate programs. And so that's how the grant committee came to that original decision. When we reconvened on Friday afternoon in a meeting to discuss it, they held firm on their original decision, they reviewed the applications that I had presented to them, and they felt that the two applications were too similar, and they seemed like they were covering the same program. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Others?
But was there, was there any dialogue, any clarification dialogue?
We weren't notified of the funds that we received from HUD until February 26 verbally. I had to wait for the official notice from HUD to come through with the actual dollar amount that goes to the mayor, who then forwards it to the city manager and myself, which was, I think, like March 6th? Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
And so it has to go in front of council to get the approval, so I can then notify tomorrow morning the grantees of what their award amount is, because it can't, it has to be approved by council for the disbursements. And I would hate to tell someone they're getting something, and then the council's like, no, it's, we've changed it. So I want the full approval.
Alderman Verbic.
So if they fill out the application in a different manner next time, will that affect the decision-making by the committee?
Absolutely. And what my hope is, since I'm brand-new to this position, and this is my first cycle with the grants, I wanna make a roadshow of it. I wanna take it out, I wanna introduce it to more potential applicants and go through the whole process. That's my hope. September, next October.
Yes, Alderman Larson.
I have a question for VAC. Are the two programs the same?
You have to come up to the podium, sorry.
I didn't think so, but...
So everyone at home can hear you.
Right. But for clarity, these are two separate programs.
Yes, these are two...
But was there, was there any dialogue, any clarification dialogue?
We weren't notified of the funds that we received from HUD until February 26 verbally. I had to wait for the official notice from HUD to come through with the actual dollar amount that goes to the mayor, who then forwards it to the city manager and myself, which was, I think, like March 6th, does that sound about right?
Yeah.
And so, it has to go in front of council to get the approval, so I can then notify tomorrow morning the grantees of what their award amount is, because it can't, it has to be approved by council for the dispersments.
Sure.
And I would hate to tell someone they're getting something, and then the council's saying, no, it's, it's, we've changed it. So I want the full approval.
Alderman Verbeck.
So if they fill out the application in a different manner next time, will that affect the decision-making by the committee?
Absolutely. And what my hope is, since I'm brand-new to this position, and this is my first cycle with the grants, I wanna make a roadshow of it, I wanna take it out, I wanna introduce it to more potential applicants, and go through the whole process. That's my hope, September next over.
Yes, Alderman Larson.
I have a question for VAC. Are the two programs the same?
You have to come up to the podium, sorry.
I, I, I didn't think so, but-
So everyone at home can hear you.
Right, but for clarity, these are two separate programs.
Yes, these are two separate programs. The human services funding is for the hot program, and, and this is honestly the only funding we have, other than the matching funds for the cold sack program. And I know we submitted with the application a budget specific to the cold sack, I'm not sure exactly how they got confused together, and I have to go back to our-
Language?
Was it a language?
Language.
Okay. Can I make one more clarification?
Sure.
In the information you received, there is a, the table does show the 80,000, which is what every agency requested, but the actual allocation, if you take 14 or 15% of the 415,000, is 62,000 and some change. So, the actual allocation last year was only 62,000 roughly, so it went from 62 to 60, not 80 to-
Can I address that?
Is that correct?
Of course, yeah.
Sure. So on February 26, we received a call from our HUD representative, and we were awarded $395,000. So actually, we should be dispersing $59,263 roughly. However, due to some carryover, we were able to get back up to the 60,000.
Gotcha.
With the approval of HUD.
Yes, city manager.
So, as in so many of these public requests for proposals, we can negotiate with the applicants after the fact, and then say, don't you think you could have said it this way, and then come back and say, well, I think on the basis of that, then you can qualify for this. That's just not fair. So we have to, you know, there, there, there are private processes that may work that way, we can't do that. So everybody has the same rules, the same application, the same guidelines for how to apply. So I, I think the system was fair, the money is a little bit less, and that's exactly what I addressed, that the 80,000 was the total of all the application, the money in all the applications. This is not the only, you know, our human services budget didn't fund everything, and it's, it's just, and I wish we could do more, if we had more money, we could do it, but this is all we get from CDBG, so this is the best we could do in that program.
And ultimately, what I was hearing you say is, I mean, to, I think Alderman Perkins' point, to be able to reach out to them, let them know, this is what we're looking at, then introduces the whole negotiation point, now you've got individuals politicking for federal dollars towards a, an agency, and they could lean in harder on one than the other, and now I think that, that not voids the process, but that taints the process that we have in place.
But I guess what I'm just suggesting is, is there room for some, not necessarily politicking, but some dialogue? You know, particularly in an instance like this, where they're gonna go from 15 to zero.
Right, yeah.
You know, it's, it's not an incremental adjustment, we're talking about eliminating programs, you know, if it's incremental, I would suspect if it's incremental, there's, there's room to shuffle your budgets around to make things go. But when you're counting on something and it goes to zero, that's where, that's where I'm raising a question in process.
Well, here's the process, and I, I, you hear me, I'm defensive of these people because they did it right.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you why.
I know.
Because the, the, VAC is, is a, is a real veteran of this process. We don't have to tell VAC employees how to do this. And if they apply with language that is confusing or is not distinct, frankly, I've, it's been some years since I've been a regular, but I, I used to regularly deliver both cold sacks and warm sacks, I know the difference between the two. That wasn't made clear. So when you have people who are trying to be objective and independent, and trying to arrive at a fair decision, they're not gonna know that? After the fact, you don't call them up and say, did you really mean this, or did you maybe mean this? That's not fair. They have all the time in the world to call us beforehand and say, by the way, in case there's any, any confusion, this is the cold sack program as opposed to the warm sack program. And if I wanted to get 15,000 that was going to be leveraged against other money, I might have gotten on the phone and called, instead of blaming her to say that she screwed up.
I don't think anyone's blaming, I think what it comes down to is we're all, I mean, you get pulled at the heartstrings on all this, like I can only imagine, real quick, real quick, I can only imagine being in everyone's role, doing it. In our role, I mean, I think there's a warm spot in VAC in everyone's heart up here, I mean, we want, we want you guys to achieve your mission, there's just so many missions out there, all great causes, all reasons why they should receive funding, but there's only so much funding to go around, so you create a process like this. I understand, Bill, the process is, it's a good one, we've got a lot of good employees giving the input on the decision-making factors, so it's not just one person making that decision.
Not me.
No, I know, I know, I know, I think you're just hearing from us, just our, our desire to take care of everyone, and we know we can't do that, so we're just discussing. Yes, Alderman Verbeck.
Does HUD provide a rationale for why they drop their funding when the need is very justified that it should go up? Why are they going in the opposite direction?
You know, I, I filed up with our HUD representative, I've gone to her boss, looking for the matrix, our population has gone down, so that impacts the amount of money. There's a couple communities that haven't received any funding in the past few years, and now they've started receiving funding, so I think they're just trying to spread it out as best they can.
Okay, thank you.
Process sucks, as far as, it's before us to make the decision, but I, I will just stand by, we've got a process in place. City staff reviewed this, they voted on it, they made a recommendation, they get a lot of these requests, and they made the best decision that they possibly could. Kills me, in fact, to say that, but I would highly encourage then, obviously, we learned from this, I'm open to anything in the future to, to lean in a little harder, absolutely, but that, that's kinda where I stand on it right now. And I'll pause for an extra minute. Yes, Alderman Favor.
So it, I don't think it's gonna help necessarily right now, but one of the things we, I was saying, we don't know is the level of, of funding that these groups or other groups receive outside of the city of DeKalb, right? They might have DeKalb County grants, they might have other federal grants. You know, we, we had a discussion a few months, about a month ago or so, on another nonprofit that was receiving grants outside of the city of DeKalb, and they were coming to the city of DeKalb asking for a grant, so. I don't know if that can be part of our application, I'm, you know, if this is gonna-
It is part of their application, they have to put down-
What other grants that they receive?
What their percentage of outside funds are.
Okay, perfect.
And just as a side note, I have been looking at other grants to see if there are any that VAC would qualify for.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
All right. Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
For I?
All right, Resolution 2023-041 passes. Where'd Jennifer go? Oh yeah, so yeah, definitely love the idea of anything we can do to find some extra money out there, yeah, I know you will, I know you will. Nate?
Thank you for listening.
Yeah.
Thank you, thinking hard about it.
Yeah, okay. All right, and you don't have to stay, I know you're a busy man, you got some other stuff to go to, so head out and feel free to call me tomorrow. All right. All right, moving on to Agenda K2, Resolution 2023-034, approving a retail tobacco store, or, you know what, I'm sorry, we're just gonna shift them all down, let's, let's do Resolution 2023-033, authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP, economic incentive for Cuatro Amigos venue at 240 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $25,000. And I have to recuse myself from this, I just realized.
Yeah.
Alderman Favor, you wanna run it from here? Thank you.
So can you get a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderman Larson, city manager.
Thank you. So, but we used to know is the, the former Lincoln Inn at 240 East Lincoln Highway is, has been undergoing some remodeling for a period of months, and the piece de resistance for this remodeling is going to be a new facade, it was an old tired facade with an old awning, as you may know. What's been proposed is in your background, in a graphic way, to show that it will be tastefully done, it's gonna be a tile facade, and the work will, will be done on this particular venue, because it's the, the owners, the Cuatro Amigos' intention to turn this former restaurant into a new space for banquets and, and private parties. And they have a, a budget related to the facade improvements, and some electrical, related electrical improvements that have to do with the lighting, the exterior lighting, that exceeds $60,000. They are qualified under the, the program guidelines to get up to 25,000 for facade improvements and electrical improvements, so they have asked for that amount. The city's building department has been involved with renovation, and this would come out as a forgivable loan, as the other AIP grant requests have, have done, and it'd be funded by our TIF III fund, and I have a line item here where it would be funded. We recommend this, they've, they've been good to work with, they are, as you know, very much involved in Al Hemedore, and they've made a big difference in the 200 block of, of East Lincoln Highway, and we strongly recommend your support.
Any comments? Yes, Alderman Verbeck.
I, I support this request, but I circle back to parking, and maybe that's on a, on another agenda coming up in reference to this, but I certainly envision a number of vehicles for an event, and I think we need to get back to the discussion of pay stations to keep parking fair downtown. There's a lot of parking downtown, but everyone wants the spaces that are on Lincoln Highway, right in front of the building. So I think even more of an effort for whoever is certainly overseeing parking enforcement, which I believe is the police department. I, again, don't really want the police department patrolling parking if they don't need to, and that's what these pay stations will do, is help resolve that issue. So just touching base back on that again, that I'm asking for council support to get that on our agenda ASAP. Thank you.
Hear the comment? Roll call?
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
For I?
Motion passes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Please, you don't have to stay, you can head out after this, but definitely wanna say thanks for investing in the community, it's fantastic what you all are doing, so definitely appreciate it up here. Here, come up to the microphone, man, you gotta talk to the microphone.
I'm not really good talking, but what I'm saying is, thank you so much to everybody, we've been here doing a great job, and it's, I don't, it's not, and me, is that everybody can see that we've been working super hard in downtown, trying to connect more with the community, and bring more people actually to the downtown. So this new project is for, actually, for doing downtown better and better every single day, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Resolution 2023-034, approving a retail tobacco store license for Joss Smoke Shop DBA Smoke Shop Pipes and Things, 901 Lucinda Avenue, Suite P. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderman Perkins, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, this is another area of town, the old Village Commons area that has been under some serious remodeling for the last year, year and a half or so. This is a particular use that the council looked at in early January, when you approved a special use permit for this particular location on the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so it comes back now, the licenses are ready to be approved. In this case, we're looking for a city license that would be conditional pending the state approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
By I?
Resolution 2023-034 passes. Do we have one here on this resolution, or no? Okay. Again, just everyone in the audience, if your agenda item comes up and it gets passed, or however it plays out, feel free, you can go ahead and leave at any point after that. All right, next is Resolution 2023-035, authorizing a professional services agreement with Stan Tech Architecture Incorporated for architectural and engineering design of a transit, maintenance, and operations facility in an amount not to exceed $2,999,792. Can I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, there's a long history here, and for people who've been following the council since 2019, there have been different thresholds along the way. Actually, Stan Tech was approved as the architectural consulting firm that was going to take us through the process of creating a, a new transit center back in May of 2019, and the first step was to engage the council in a consideration of a variety of sites, and we went through about a year and a half of, and COVID didn't help with the overall conversation, we had some other things we needed to attend to during that process. But in October of last year, the Transit Site Selection Committee, which was an add-on in about 2021, the council thought we should get some community members to help us figure this out, in addition to the, the standard technical considerations, and they had made the recommendation that the new transit center should be north of Dresser Road, behind, basically, the city's water tower, and slightly northwest from there. The, the consulting contract in this case will take us through a large part of the prep for getting us to actual construction. And if you look on page three of your background tonight, you see it's a breakdown, we've already had committed to us $20,864,742, so the feds and the state are on board. Some of that has already been spent a little bit to Stan Tech and for related costs that were involved in doing some of the due diligence in 2021, 2022. So left, what's left, $20 million, almost $800,000, that's the available funding. We're applying for some more, so that, this is a slightly scaled-down version of what we'd like, we'd like to have a little higher ceiling, that means more steel, more complicated design and so forth, and if we get some of the money, and we think we will get some, maybe not all the 10 million that we've asked for, we can put more buses inside and do some other things inside the building, which was one of the long-range goals of, of this whole process. So Stan Tech's design schedule anticipates final design documents about a year from now, this is no small thing, it also involves the engineering outside, and there are a number of challenges in, in the terrain and, and the surrounding area. And then shortly thereafter, proposals, or an RFP release to invite qualified contractors to give us construction bids on the process. So it's, we're, we're making progress, I, I wish it was yesterday, but here we are, it's, it's, it's an important threshold in, in terms of where we've been and where we need to go, recommend your approval.
Counsel. Oh, Alderman Verbeck, sorry.
I approve this, but I just wanna confirm again that this entire project, including needed street improvements, signaling, whatever is required, will be cost-neutral to the taxpayers of DeKalb, that is correct, right?
That's, I mean, as of right now, we're not voting any general operating funds for this.
Do we anticipate any-
No, no. We're trying to keep the design within what we know to be the state- No. We're trying to keep the design within what we know to be the state and federal fiscal support for this.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? That's a good call out. But I mean, obviously, things unfold and things change, but it's nice to know that, yeah, this whole project, which will be fantastic, is funded outside of the taxpayers of the city of DeKalb. All right. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2023-035 passes. Now, Resolution 2023-036, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and awarding the purchase of three cardiac monitors and additional items to place the monitors in service from Zoll Medical Corporation in an amount not to exceed $93,361.11 using ground emergency medical transportation, GEM-T funding, Fund 130. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The Illinois Department of Public Health requires, doesn't suggest, that in first arriving units from our fire department, whether it's accidents, fires, whatever, where a cardiac monitor might be needed, that we have proper certified and, and up to date monitors that can help the firefighter paramedics who are there to, to save lives and to make sure that people are removed from danger. And we have, in, in the last year, outfitted our frontline ambulances. We have three, the first engines out are also under this IDPH requirement. And that's important in our case because engines and ambulances don't always arrive at the same time at a traffic accident. We may have ambulances out and backup ambulances out in a busy evening or a busy time of the day. And the people who roll are the people who are going to have to provide the first level of care. So that's why we need these on those. We don't have them. So we've recommended that. The GEM-T fund is going to have the resources to pay for this and we're happy for that. And we have the training and, and the expertise to do it right.
Council. Hearing none. Chief, I'm gonna need a tour soon. We've, we've gotten a lot of stuff for our fire department. I can't wait to see all the shiny vehicles and new equipment. All right. Hearing other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2023-036 passes. Resolution 2023-037, authorizing the purchase of a set of six sterile coney, columnless, I'm sure I got that right, wrong, lifts with appropriate accessories from Safety Lane Automotive Equipment in an amount not to exceed $101,092 utilizing ground emergency medical transport, GEM-T funding 130. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you. So this starts with our, our fire chief's prudence in, in terms of his budget and, and cost centers that are running ahead of where we feel they should be this time of year or any time of year. And one of those is in vehicle repairs. The fire department sends out nearly all of their, we, we have, we have some mechanics who do change oil, do stuff like that. But when it comes to major repairs, transmission and the like, we send them out to other centers. And oftentimes, the frontline vehicles are out for a week or two. So we scramble, we, we adjust, we improvise. But the main thing, in addition to the inconvenience and what that means, it's kind of difficult in the plan, what, what's available for any particular day for emergency response. There's the rising costs that's impacting us. And in 21, 2021, the overall total was about 87,000. These are rounded numbers. And last year, these are not audited numbers, but we were up around 92,000. And we expect that's going to keep going up, the cost of, of repair, the cost of parts and so forth. Through some creative discussion, Chief Thomas and Andy Rye, our Assistant Director of Public Works, have been talking about what might work. So with the biggest space that we have for repairing ambulances, engines, dump trucks, graders or whatever, is our public works garage. And the possibility of putting in a, a standard hydraulic lift with a, a well below it for the hydraulic fluid and, and, and the kind that you would actually, you lower the lift and then you drive the vehicle on and jump out and then raise it up, that kind of thing is, is very pricey, a lot pricier than what we're proposing here. Sometime, I, don't quote me on this, 20, 25 years ago, I know there's another place not too far from here to the north where I was involved. And soon after I got there, we got some of the first ones because we couldn't afford, we couldn't afford ambulances. We certainly couldn't afford the lift. So, and they have, they have come a long way since then. These are easily moved around by a mechanic and you put one at every wheelbase. And if you have, say, a tandem truck or an engine, you get six. And if you were thinking smaller, you don't have that much equipment, four. And they go up at the same time. They're rated. In this case, what we're looking at is rated for 111,000 pounds. The heaviest vehicle we have is the, the current ladder truck, which, Riproaring. And the new truck that we're, we're going to receive in about a year is at 80,000 pounds for rating. So lots of room for that. And so what does all this mean? Well, the GEM-T fund is available for the one-time purchase of the, of the towers that lift the vehicle. What about the, the people who are going to do the work? Fair question. Right now, we feel that it's a, a more, it's an advantageous trade-off for us, although, you know, here we are, it's getting near the end of March. We've already spent some money out of that vehicle repair line item. But we feel by the end of the year, we'll still be in, in the positive, in the black. If we hire somebody who is, you know, have to go through the usual process of hiring and advertiser position and find the job description and all that. But we need somebody, obviously, who has experience with truck repair and so forth. And that person would ultimately be assigned to the public works department. But the trade-off is in the general fund, because the general fund is what we're talking about here for funding, whether it's equipment or, or personnel, is going to be a wash or maybe even better in our favor. Certainly at the start, will it always be? It's, it's hard to tell. Just as our, our personnel expenses go up, so do the, the farming out of repairs such as this. And we've seen that we have some evidence of that. So I think they've been creative in coming up with something that, that will definitely help the fire department, but will not cause an inconvenience to the public works department. And in those, in the event, and by the way, right now, we have about a two-week backlog of repairs that need to be done and even farmed out. But in the event that, you know, people catch up certain times of the year, which is wonderful. We have no shortage of equipment, older equipment, as you know, in the public works department and even some older equipment in the fire department. So that mechanic would be trained and certified as long as the first priority is going to be that the fire equipment, because that's what this whole thing is about. We want to have that equipment available to us to do the kind of response that we're hired to do.
Council. Yes, Alderman Perkins.
So, so clarifying point on, on following the money. I applaud the, the creativity, great job. So what we're going to see is essentially a shift in costs, right? The maintenance costs are going to go away. We're going to control more of our own destiny. We're going to invest in ourselves. Our lead times are going to go down because we're going to do it ourselves. But it's going to be a, a budget neutral thing. We're not going to spend any more money.
That's what we're aiming for. Yes.
Yeah, that's, and that's the intent.
Yes.
But like you said, you did call out, we've already spent some of the money out of that potential fund, so we might see.
But we won't hire a person for a full year. So when you do the numbers, it comes out about, about a wash.
Lift is pretty cool. You know, I went and looked it up and it's, it's pretty.
Yeah.
Pretty creative. You know, the, the ability to, to move it around with some, some mobility is a good solution. Just wanted to make sure it's a, it's going to be.
That's correct.
Budget neutral.
And it's safe too. I mean, you think, oh my gosh, this is, you know, what if one of them slips away or something? There are all kinds of safety features on these, these columns. And the safety lanes that the state, state requires for trucks to go through often have these now, because in the old days, everybody had two or three big lifts. Can't afford it anymore. So for the same reasons that we would look at these, they've looked at those. And that has helped push the industry along because they're, they're, they have, and the name, safety lane. So they're, they're.
We're good.
Playing on that.
Alderman Larson.
I have two questions. So when you were coming up with this $55,000 that we could use to hire somebody, the first question is, you had said that you had contractual maintenance and repairs already in place or that you budgeted for. Does that include like supplies and stuff? Because you know, like, like some places, it's like you get a free oil change forever and that includes the oil. So would there be any additional like hydraulic fluid, oil, stuff like that, that would be, would have to come out of that?
So if we're going to do it here rather than shipping it out, then we, yes, there will have to be supplies and, and whether it's liquids or belts or nuts and bolts and all the rest of that. But we're paying for that one way or another, right? So if it goes out, you can bet on the, on the invoice from Joe's handy ambulance repair place. You're going to pay for that.
Yeah.
And more. They're going to mark it up five or 10%. We can probably get it at cost and I think it works better for us.
And then the second question is, would this 55,000, would that include the employee as fully loaded, like all of his?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's, it's obviously right now, we don't know when that would, that hire. If you approve it tonight, I hope you do. Then we have to go through a process that might take 60 days. So, you know, now the, the cost of the employee is not as much by the end of the year. And we don't know yet whether the person's going to have a, you know, obviously we have a health insurance plan. Is it a family? Is it a single? But I, I think this is a, it, it should, there are some other savings in both of their budgets where we can cover a little bit. So I think we'll be okay.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2023-037 passes. Now, Resolution 2023-038, approving an agreement for architectural, engineering, planning and special services and design phase services with Crawford, Murphy and Tilly Incorporated for Project DKB-4924 for the removal and replacement of a portion of the aircraft parking apron at the DeKalb Municipal Airport in an amount not to exceed $47,000, which I assume that's the fund, 650-00-00-83900. What is that number? Is that the fund?
Yeah, that's the airport.
Yeah, okay. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic, City Manager.
Yeah, this is about a million dollar project. Our cost will be 5% of 47,000. It's in the FY '23 budget. We recommend your approval.
Must not be interested in runways like you are.
We'll wait for the next one.
Yeah. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2023-038 passes. Moving to Resolution 2023-039, approving an agreement for architectural, engineering, planning and special services and design phase services with Crawford, Murphy and Tilly Incorporated for Project DKB-5063 for the rehabilitation of runway 927 at the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport in an amount not to exceed $132,000, which is fund 650-00-00-83900. And that was not a challenge to speak more verbose on this than the lifts, just to be clear.
So moved.
Second.
So. So moved by Alderman Verbic, or Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic, City Manager.
Thank you. So this is what one time we called the Northeast-Southwest New Runway. It's 23 years old now. It's showing wear and tear like most of our asphalt streets are. The, the problem is you can go through a, a pothole. It's not too bad. You're okay. You can get to the intersection. If you hit one when you're, when you're landing, not so good. And so the standards are higher. We've, we've maintained as best we can, but as you know, once you get to a certain point where water's gotten into some cracks and so forth, then you start to get heaves and alligatoring. And it's, it's a need of a resurfacing. We've had it on our, on our transportation and program or program schedule, TIP, acronym we use, for quite a while. And what usually happens when now the federal and the state government say, oh, it's your turn, DeKalb, we better be there with our, with our local share and we better vote for it. And supporter else will say, well, you don't want it that much. We'll go on to something else. So, and that's, that's how that, that game is played. So we're, we're notified. It's the TIP that you saw about two months ago, had this on there. Actually, it probably showed it as a 22 program. It's probably going to be in 24, but that's how that works. It takes a while for, for these higher levels, state and federal projects to get going. So this is to help with the design services and the amount is $132,000.
Council. Alderman Favor.
So I was, I think I saw Renee in the back. So I was just going to ask, can we, in the, in the recent, for 2, 0220 runway, we had, there were significant times when the runways were closed, the crossing, the entire airport was closed. As part of this, can we, I'm, I'm hoping that we will put in there a specific mitigation for closing the airport and to minimize any airport closure at all.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks for that question. We did have a significant closure period, much longer than we thought. During COVID time, the, some of the construction subcontractors, there were some issues there that, of course, nobody could control that. But it was unfortunate. It was hard on our operations for not only our tenants, but then the loss of transients that we don't know, that nobody calls up and says, well, your airport's closed. We're not coming. You know, they just look and say, your airport's closed. We're not coming. So the good thing is when they did that reconstruction of that surface on runway 220, they went through the intersection with our east-west runway, which this project is. And they feathered off onto the east-west runway. So when that runway is closed, east-west, they will come up and do an abutment to that, a butt joint. And then we won't have the impact on runway 220 for the time that we did for the whole airport. So we've already mitigated some of that lost time because that was already done on the northeast-southwest runway. Does that help?
Mm-hmm.
Your question.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please. Thanks, Renee.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2023-039 passes. Moving on to Resolution 2023-041, approving an agreement for a deed in lieu of foreclosure for 807 Oak Street. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a long time in, in coming. And I thank the, the city attorney and our building department for patiently working with the neighborhood to try to get this distressed building down. It is down now. We paid for it. We don't want to be left hanging on this. So we, we would like a deed in lieu of, of the foreclosure on the amount of money. And maybe if we sell this at a later point, we'll get some of that, if not most of it, back. That's what this is about.
Council, questions, comments? Be good to finalize this. Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2023-041 passes. Moving on to Agenda Item L, ordinances, second reading, we have none. Then Agenda Item M, ordinances, first reading. And what, what is the official order? Should we do public comment before I bring it to the floor? Yeah, okay. All right. So at this point, we have public comment. I have two. First one, John Guavetta, come on up to the podium. And John, just so you know, you have three minutes for public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, council members, city staff.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, council members, city staff, Mr. Nicholas. Business is tough. It's been very tough for the past three years, especially tough with COVID, lockdowns, inflation, labor costs, property taxes, bank failures. It's a tough environment. One of the remedies Illinois offers businesses is video gaming. We look at DeKalb, in 2022, with a population of 40,000, there were 20 licensed locations that finished 2022 earning revenue with video gaming for a total municipal tax of $391,000. Compare that to Belvedere, whose population is 25,000, they had 37 businesses operating with video gaming and a municipal tax of $526,000 in that year. And then Loves Park, also with a population of 25,000, had 70 small businesses with video gaming and a municipal tax of $1.27 million. We can see from the smaller communities of Belvedere and Loves Park, the diversified gaming options mean more gaming tax revenues and more locally owned businesses. To give you some background about me, six years ago, I was the chief of staff to State Senator Brian Stewart of the 45th District out of Freeport. I had been a member of the Winnebago County Board from 2010 to 2016 and had the distinct opportunity to have been elected again in a different district of the board in November of last year. So I'm now serving District 3 up in Roscoe. I'm a senior business development manager for Lucky Street Gaming, which is the terminal operation that's owned by Sunil Puri, who owns First Midwest Group. And I've just spent the past few weeks in DeKalb, visiting with local businesses, talking about what their needs are, talking about what they're facing. And my encouragement to you as fellow members in the local government, fellow representatives, is that there's just no need to rush. And in fact, I would like to work with you. We can talk together with local business owners. I'm happy to talk about your priorities for DeKalb and the things that you find important. Let's work together, and we can find solutions to help move forward. And maybe at the end of the process, we end up in the same place with the very same solution. Maybe we explore lower-octane alternatives to the current ordinance. But at the end of the day, we'll know we've done everything that can be done. Thank you.
Thanks, John. How do you pronounce your last name? Did I?
It's, I taught logic to high school students for a long time, and I used to say it's G like duh, V like car, uh.
Go vara.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, then we also have Dwayne Brown. You know, you know, Dwayne, but three minutes, please.
We don't need unnecessary and restrictive regulations regarding the number of video gaming establishments in the city. This is already a highly regulated industry by the state. Don't put a cap on the number of establishments. This has has caused and will cause prospective businesses to seek permits in other cities. Quite frankly, the free market does a much better job of determining the proper number than the city council does. It would be helpful to have additional video gaming establishments to help ease the burden of the overstressed taxpayers in DeKalb. The city wants to lower the tax rate from 11% to 9% to better compete with neighboring cities. This revenue generator is a perfect way to accomplish just that. We have lost our industrial base because of overregulation and high taxes. The same can be said for restaurants. We have lost KFC, Long John Silver's because of sign regulations. We no longer have Marcos, Appleby's, Eduardo's, Flappy's, The Hillside, The Huddle, IHOP, O'Leary's, Ali's, Peter Pete's, Rosie's Roadhouse, Tom and Jerry's, Ruby Tuesday's, The Beef Shack, The Twins Tavern, and others. The South 4th Street corridor should be a priority for the future development of DeKalb. We need retail, restaurants, and other businesses in that area. The council rejected the liquor license and video gaming permit for the laundromat on 4th Street, and it was denied because the school board said it was too close to the school. Sullivan's had sold liquor at that location for many years. That's absurd. In 2022, there were only two new homes built in DeKalb. Forty percent of the homes bought in Sycamore are purchased by DeKalb residents. St. Charles has 24 video gaming establishments and a population of 32,900. Springfield has 736 terminals, collected 11.1 million in tax. Of that, 9.3 million went to the state and 1.9 million went to the city of Springfield. The video establishments have an annual review anyway. Don't place an artificial cap on them. Make DeKalb business friendly. Thank you.
All right, I would take a motion to bring it to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the ordinance fairly reflects what the council's consensus was over the last couple of meetings where this has been discussed. And so I I present that to you tonight for your direction, based on what we understood to be the the consensus of the council. We have come before you with a recommendation to approve.
Counsel, questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Verbic.
In the back of the tux about there are five existing businesses that would be eligible. How many more could be eligible in the future? In other words, we're, it sounds as if counsel, and certainly I wanted to thank those that reached out to me over the last couple of weeks with their concerns, believing that I support video gaming, and that couldn't be further from the truth. I don't recommend video gaming. It's a game that's set up for you to lose money. So do not participate in video gambling if at all possible. But the greater number of people I heard from are are to Mr. Brown's comment about limiting or counsel believing that we know the market better than the business community, for example. Back to the five existing businesses that would be eligible, is there any way to, can counsel say no more for future businesses? In other words, the way I feel is that this is somewhere in between of counsel staying out of it, but not staying out of it, while we could have more coming to request these in the future, if you know what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I, these are five businesses that currently have a bar liquor license. So it is something, according to our direction from the last meeting, you weren't putting a limit on the number of bar liquor licenses that could have VGTs. This is the universe, though, of what we know out there today. Will there be some more in the summer and the fall? I can't say. Someone said here earlier tonight, it's a tough time to business, and so it's not a it's not a growth time in terms of of bar licenses, but it, you know, in another year or two, it may change. So it could happen, so you might have seven, say, in 2024 at that point. I can't say for sure.
But can we tell them, no? You can't have.
You can, you can change what's in the ordinance and do that. But I was just going on what, we laid this out and kind of checked checked the box and went through all of these, and this is where you were.
Yeah. What I heard, what I heard through all the conversation was, yeah, if it's a bar essentially, then you can have video gaming terminals in those bars up to six. What we're talking about is just the the VGEs. That's what we're putting a cap on. Does that sum it, summarize it reasonably? Yes.
That's true.
Okay.
So the calls and emails I've received, so this this is really not limiting it in the future. So yes, it does limit standalone parlors.
Yes.
But the number of games could grow, whether it's a bar, perhaps private club, I'm not sure who else would fit this category. So there's still going to be growth in these terminals.
As long as they have a bar liquor license.
As long as they have a bar liquor.
With what's existing, it would be more incremental. You remember that, I didn't replicate the chart here, but you remember, some had four, some had five, some had six. So there might be a couple more here and there of the existing businesses, not not the the video gaming establishments.
If you remember, some had like three, some had four. So now, yeah, they can go up to six. If you have a, if a new bar comes to town and they have a bar liquor license, they can have video gaming terminals in there as well. We're not restricting that at all.
So my personal preference would have been that the state never approved this to begin with. I don't like that the state of Illinois relies on gambling to fund our essential services. But I think we can make the most of it if this growth that we look at, if we can capture those funds and dedicate those funds to gambling addiction and/or human services and VAC for their cold sandwiches or whatever the case may be. To me, we we need to start reinvesting in those challenges because a couple of the calls I took this week, no, we are not the the group that prevents gambling addiction. We're not the group that prevents alcohol addiction. We're not the group that prevents smoking addiction. But it's a rough circumstance. So what can we do as as counsel to help mediate and help these situations? And to me, that's through dedicated funding that's pointed at those issues.
And I'd want to see one of our nonprofit community to reach out, and if they had a special program that they wanted to dedicate to it, then I could see it. I don't think it's up to us to, and I don't think you're saying that, to create and make that a city service that we're going to provide.
Right, no, no. But I feel like we should be dedicating a portion of, whether it's monies we've already collected or future monies, to address that issue specifically. And no, we're not, we don't do that. We don't provide the counseling from the city of DeKalb. But how can we be a better partner to help help people that just are taken by this gambling?
So I think that's a, yeah, another conversation. I think that's independent of what we're proven tonight.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is, I believe, a direction we should go in.
Okay.
Again, I, like I mentioned at the last meeting, I'll support counsel's wishes. But let's think, let's, to the speaker's point, let's not rush into this. How can we make this a better ordinance for all?
Alderwoman, Alderwoman Larson, yes.
We started off this meeting talking about taxes. And Mr. Shavat was right about how many taxpayers we have and the the formula that comes up with our tax dollars. One other way to look at that is we need more houses, we need more people, more actual taxpayers living here. And so I look at this as what kind of town do I want DeKalb to be? So it's like, God, we could move here, there, anywhere. I say, I really like DeKalb. I really like what they stand for. I like where they're going. And I think this kind of ordinance is the type that we're not saying, we're not thumping our Bible saying, get rid of gambling. But I I also think to have gambling parlors within every quarter of a mile on Sycamore Road is also not necessarily saying, bring your young kids and family here and settle in. This is a great place to raise a family. So I think with the freestanding ones we have now, we have actually 11 or a possibility for 11. And then any bar can have their six from the state, every new bar can have six from the state. But I'm trying to look ahead to try to get that balance of what we want DeKalb to be. And and that's that's really what, you know, it's not about, I think, bring your restaurants here, bring your bars here, bring your families here, settle here, and and try to just have a, I don't know, just a more family friendly.
So I think, and I appreciate that, and I agree. We've had a lot of conversation about this. I don't think we've rushed this in any way, shape, or form. We agreed at a previous council meeting for Alderman Perkins, myself, and the city manager to sit down, lay out what this is, looks like, brought it back, heads nodding. This is a great compromise for, I think, for everyone concerned that we are still allowing it to move forward, we're just restricting a certain element of it. Future councils can always change it. Absolutely. This is just what we're deciding right now is what we believe is the best fit for the city of DeKalb. But I think it is, it's it's perfect from, it allows expansion, but it also allows limiting a certain component of it. So it was brought to us, the city staff went through, modified the ordinances. I'd like to just call a vote at this point and see where we stand. But I'm, heads nodding? Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Bye-bye.
And since we've talked about this in the public a lot, heard about it a lot, I would definitely take a motion to waive second reading on this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Favor. Questions or comments? Alderman Verbic.
So then, City Manager, would would this be a part of a budget discussion then, where we would direct you to carve out a specific amount of future proceeds from gaming toward? Okay.
Yeah, I I have some thoughts on that. So the money right now is going into the general fund.
Right.
And just as we do with the human services budget, where we take 200,000 out of there and you put it over here for this this list of social service agencies doing these good things, that could be another one. I would hesitate to recommend that we do it and we, at the beginning, we just say, since we may have, say, three agencies in town, they're automatically going to get something, and we don't know yet about the quality of what they're they're bringing and and is it successful and all that. So we could expand the human, we're not going to decide it now, the human services budget with the caveat, the council's recommendation, that we highlight this as we are looking at proposals, and we advertise that that is a, let's say, a strong starter.
And, yeah, for me, that, again, that would be a separate conversation. For me, I'll say this ordinance, but I would definitely want to have that conversation because.
Great.
If if that's the case, then we could just eliminate all video gambling. And now we've done our part to address the part you're talking about, to have, to take the money and then reinvest it in services for those that we allowed in our community to participate in it and then have that addiction. It just seems contradictory to me. So, but that would be a separate conversation that we can have, figuring out where those funds go.
I do want to say just that most of the state funding, there's a dedicated portion from the video gaming that goes to addiction. You know, that doesn't preclude the city from doing something similar, but you should know that that a good chunk of the state funding is dedicated to that purpose.
And maybe if that comes up, we could educate social services that, hey, there's state funding out there for this particular item. Yes?
I would like to add to that funding. Do we see that funding from the state for gambling addiction? Can anyone tell me?
Yeah, we can, we can look it up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Bye-bye.
All right, ordinance 2023-016, second reading has been waived. Moving on to agenda item N, Reports and Communications, council member reports. Alderman Favor, you want to kick us off?
Sure. I think it was in the, might have been in the city newsletter, I certainly heard it on the on the radio, right? Yard Waste Collection's going to start up again in April, so, you know, good time to collect up all the leaves and all the the branches and things that have fallen in the recent snow and ice storms and get those wrapped up and ready to go for the curb.
Alderman Verbic.
No report.
Alderman Perkins.
No report.
Alderwoman Larson.
I had the honor this past week of seeing the latest additions to the DeKalb Fire Department. It's always such an honor to be there and see our new members. What, 276? And what was their number, something like that?
73.
Okay, okay. So that was my highlight.
Awesome. Myself, just a few highlights. Yesterday, I went to Black Incorporated's grand opening. They're down on North 2nd Street, which was really cool. Lots of excitement, lots of people turned out. And it's cool to see what Tiffany Tucker continues to be able to drive forward. And if you remember right, she started off in the Belonging Center as one of the new nonprofit incubators. So it's neat to see her continue to grow and expand. So I'm really hopeful. So I'm really hopeful she's going to continue to crush it. Was on the TD Ryan's radio show, which is always fascinating. That is the last, I think it's the last, it might be the fourth Friday at 9:15 every month. Also went and was there for the unveiling of the world's largest paper snowflake that made the Guinness Book of World's Records that NIU created. I was there when they were first doing the cutting and it was neat to see the final product that was out there. So that was a lot of fun. I also slopped around in the mud and with the help of the streets department, we're, I got to say thank you to the street department for picking up all the bags, but we, with some of the fraternities at Northern Illinois University, cleaned up the entire L. So if you drive by there, I highly encourage you, there's no garbage. Maybe there's a cup or two at this point, but it looks just so, so much better. Also, oh, the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission meeting, super excited. They'll be emailing you the final results of what the city hall mural is going to look like. It's really cool. I think we'll all be proud of that. But the most, probably the coolest thing about it is it's going to be massive community engagement, like we've been talking about here at the library, but we're going to co-create together, many people in the community, that mural. So everyone that wants to is going to have the opportunity to have their own fingerprint in that mural that's on city hall, which I think is just phenomenal. And then overall, just a couple of the meetings here and there, but it's been a busy couple of weeks. And we've had Congresswoman Underwood out, we've had state Rep. Kiker. We've been having a lot of conversations at the state level to make sure DeKalb is top of mind with them when it comes to funding, when it comes to some things that we need their help with. And there've been a lot of great conversations associated with that. And with that, I have nothing else. City manager, do you have anything to report?
Two quick things. I want to thank council member Larson for showing up at our swearing ins. That's important and we appreciate the support. And all of you are welcome to do that and hopefully you're getting those dates and times and we welcome you to do that. There is an RFP out for our refuse contract that will be due toward the end of April and there'll be a mandatory show up for interested parties later this week. Just Q and A session if they have any questions about the request for proposals. And we look forward to what will happen out of that. And finally, another RFP, which was circulated and we've gotten the results. We have two proposals for the L in Annapolis North, the Black Hawk and Hillcrest L that we own. And I'm working on not only synthesizing and summarizing what those two proposals say, but also trying to come up with what I think will be a decent recommendation for your consideration when we get to that on April 10th.
Awesome.
All right, agenda item O, executive session, we have none, which gets us to P, adjournment. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign. We are adjourned.